We can probably make it quick.
What's that?
No, no. Okay, we'll call the, we're all set? We'll call the Tremont Select, Tremont Planning Board, meeting February 13th, order at 6:03. Roll call, we have Brett with them. We have Mr. Ben Harper, myself, Mark Good, Deputy CEO Katie Higgins, few members of the audience, and we don't know if it was Lawson, he didn't say anything. We did find out from Beth that she is not feeling well and won't be here, so I'll take a motion to excuse Beth.
I so move.
Okay. Second motion, okay, all in favor? Okay, three, nothing, excuse Beth. We'll wait and see if Lawson shows up. Okay, the minutes of January 23rd, well, it's gonna be hard for us to do anything without Lawson here, because we're the only ones here, but...
Think, have you seen your vehicle? I guess he lines up there? Yeah, there's a lot of people driving in.
Well, wait a second there. It's probably somebody charging their car. Oh, it is him, okay.
Sorry everyone, I heard this.
Okay, gee. At the record show that Lawson Wilson is here at 6:04 PM.
Better leave the number.
Okay. We were just going to the minutes, Lawson, and we needed you here for that since...
Good thing I arrived.
Yeah, exactly. And I saw some issues. First of all, under unexcused absences, it says there were no excused absences. It should be no unexcused absences. And also, we had that public hearing on Bass Harbor Marine, we held it after the minutes, as we adjusted the agenda, open a public hearing after a review of the minutes, and it shows on the minutes here that it came after old business.
Yep.
Okay.
So was the adoption of the agenda, that just happened?
What, if you recall, that the agenda itself did not have the public hearing that we're supposed to have, remember? So we added that to adjust the agenda, and the note says, "You asked the question and it did receive proper public notice."
Right, I remember.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so those are the two things. So if somebody makes a motion to approve them with those amendments, unless somebody sees something else...
I so move.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion second on the table to approve the January 23rd, 2024 minutes as amended? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Wait, sorry. Any discussion, while we're discussing? I'm just catching up, we had a long conversation, if I recall, about the solar ordinances.
Under old business, one, the motion, old business proposed land use changes...
Great, okay, great. I see, I got distracted by the other in the, where we also talked about.
Yeah, I, yeah, they were kind of confusing this time.
But...
In fact, I had to call Katie this afternoon, I had to look at them to double check on some things.
Great, all right, I'm satisfied, thank you.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, who's, somebody gonna abstain here? Okay, and Brett's gonna abstain. Okay, thank you. Proposed land use changes, old business, essentially, we, for the one person who wasn't here last time, we did approve the sending the proposed land use changes and the proposed solar standards onto Selectment, two to one, last time, with Lawson in opposition. Okay, so basically what Katie has done here is we had a couple, she's just reformatted this, basically, correct? And there was one change she did add to the industrial solar energy system definition. I know, and we found there were a couple words misspelled there with the change. And the only change was excluding municipality, which was something Jesse suggested to...
Just in case the Phase Two comes of our solar before there's any solar ordinance in place.
Okay. The only thing is, we were saying no to them now, so we could develop standards for them, because we have no standards for these large-scale solar systems.
And that, yep.
And, and my question would be, do we need to add that excluding municipality at this point? Because, first of all, we know the grid is not ready for this Phase Two, right?
All right, right, yes.
There's no proposal on the table. It's not something that's gonna happen in the near future.
I think there's, well, there's a lot on our table, but I think there is a proposal on Person's table, that the town has been working with Person on this project, to improve infrastructure. I don't know, it's been many years, and I don't know how many...
So, I'm talking specifically about the solar array?
Yep.
Okay.
Right.
There's no property that's been purchased or planned?
Well, just the, so, the Phase Two...
It would go on to the landfill?
Right.
Okay.
And I think it's the land, my information's a few years old, but landfill plus the roofs of the maintenance gyms or the...
Public Works Buildings and that sort of thing, okay.
I think it's, is there's a possibility that it could happen soon. I think that that's a very remote chance, but, and maybe it could happen before we pass other solar ordinances. But it seems unlikely, but it's possible. But didn't this already go...
I thought you mentioned one time that we won't even know who actually owns this.
Well, what is this and who is we?
Okay, the, the solar array?
Yep.
And the town. Does the town gonna actually own it, or is it going to be another commercial venture leasing the property?
I don't think that's been determined. Yeah.
So excluding municipality may not municipal-owned?
Doesn't sound to me like that's something that needs to be in there now. I mean, we, I think we could, we could...
Forego that at this point?
Forego that at this point, and then that will give us a chance to, to look it over.
And do the standards.
And do the standards.
Brett, any thoughts on that?
So I think it was Jesse that suggest made...
Yeah.
And it's to the, it's to the...
Industrial solar system definition.
The last page of the...
Page eighty there.
Does this bleed into our next line, agenda item? Or I guess I should ask, at our last meeting, we approved a set of these changes that did not include the existing municipality clause. Did that go to the Select Board?
Not yet.
Not yet, because...
Probably at their next meeting.
Of Tom V's.
The only thing is, the day after our meeting, Tom V sent stuff.
Right.
So as a courtesy, I have some issues with this, but as a courtesy, I thought we'd at least give the board a chance to look at it.
Great, that makes sense.
Why did Jesse want the, that little...
The excluding municipality?
Yeah.
Okay, because of this proposed way in, sometime in the future, Phase Two of the solar array on the landfill and some other things, so that people living in town here, residents, can buy into it, right?
I mean, that's...
You know more about it than me.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's the, the proposal, but I think that the, like, the Planning Board's purview is more about, like, do we want to permit or not permit solar arrays larger than 5,000 square feet? And, and I guess, is I, I would suggest maybe tabling or holding on to...
That ship has sailed. We've already approved these motions last, at our last meeting.
Okay. Then, then I guess my question has to do with, what is the question, like, if we've already approved one sentence, then?
It has not gone to them yet.
It hasn't gone to them, okay. We can, we can still tonight make, make some amendments, according to Jesse.
Okay.
Which we hadn't been told before, we thought it was the last meeting, okay? That's it. This is the only change in this, other than what we approved. So the question should be, do we really need to do this now, or wait until we develop some actual standards? And what Ben is saying, he thinks we can wait till the standards, and I'm kind of leaning that way myself.
Okay. I think that what you're, like, if this passes, even maybe with the excluding municipality clause, or not, your, or we, as a board, are preventing the, like, we're adding a roadblock to that...
To the town.
To the town's potential project. We could choose to do that, that's our purview, but I'm not sure, I would put, I would continue to vote against it, because I don't, I think that we should not stand in the way of a project if it is able to go forward.
Personally, I don't want to stand away the project. My question is, I want to have standards in place, okay? And whether those standards should be in place before we include this in the definition or not. And, and you're worried that standards won't be there until that project gets approved?
Well, I, I mean, I don't, the next agenda item is to review of drafts, accept standards.
Yeah, well...
So, which, I don't know, I mean, I'm not saying that, like, we're ready to pass this along, like, this is right, you know, ready to go, but I think that it is...
Okay.
...for us to generate standards, and I don't think that, I mean, I think that our current land use ordinance does have standards for how to develop commercial projects, and a solar array would fall into that right now, in terms of land coverage and buffering and things like that.
Okay. My, my only other question is, is the legality of the way it's worded?
I think it was...
Excluding municipal-owned, should it be something like that, whatever, that's, that's the question.
I think it would say excluding municipalities, or something like that.
It says excluding municipality, yeah. And/or corporate, yeah, an area of land or other are used by a property owner and/or a corporate entity excluding municipality.
Is it missing a word after other?
Yes. That's what I thought, too. I didn't bring the ones from last time. I think, you know, when she made the changes, things got messed up, because you notice industrial is spelled wrong, and fields at the end is spelled wrong, and those things were correct the last time. I didn't bring the copy of last...
I have one upstairs.
I've got it here. Other area, an area of land or other area used by a property owner.
Other area used by a property owner. Is the rest of it correct, then, except for the spelling?
Property owner and corporate entity, excluding municipality, that's the new part, then it continues for a solar collection system principally used, it looks like it's the same.
It is?
We can replace them back and forth, but yes, I'm not saying any other...
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. And should say excluding a municipality, or is that, is that too vague? Shouldn't say the town of Tremont?
I think you should say excluding the town of Tremont.
Yeah, that's, yeah, because Southwest Harbor could, under this, I mean, you're the attorney.
They come over here when it's...
Yeah.
I'm not sure that's, you know, anyone would approve that, but sure, yes, I would just say town of Tremont.
Those words, excluding the town of Tremont.
Sure. No, it assumes we, which I, I mean, I, I would probably, I don't know. I feel like our, like, our town manager just asked for this, doesn't seem like it's that big of a deal.
It doesn't seem like what?
It's that big of a deal, like, I feel like, you know, it doesn't sound like, well, I guess, you know, to... I don't know, I guess I just don't know why we just wouldn't do it, like, say, fine, we want to exclude the municipality, fine.
Okay, I'll take a motion to that effect.
I'm, I'm in devil on it.
I'll, I so move.
Okay, to make a change to town of Tremont and, and, okay, but also correct the spellings in your motion, too.
Correct the spelling errors.
So, second, I guess?
Yes.
Second.
You, you made the second, okay. Motion, a second on the table, to approve the changes, or to amend our motion from the last, yeah, that, that's what's, because we made a motion to accept it, now we got this change. So it's an amendment. Could you please state your motion a little more clearly, instead of just so moved? Make it an amendment, amendment, amend it to include the new definition of industrial solar.
And to clean up the spelling errors.
Second.
Okay. Motion, a second on the table, to amend our motion from the previous meeting regarding land use changes regarding industrial solar energy systems to include, correct the spelling errors, and include excluding the town of Tremont. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Brett, no? No, Brett said yes. Lawson?
And I'm not in favor.
You're not in favor?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
Do you want to hear why?
I fuck you!
Uh-uh, no. It's because of, anyway, yeah, we went through it a lot last week.
That was the last, I just did it last week.
Okay. So we're all set with that, right, Katie? Okay. Okay, we have since received, if you recall that we asked Tom V at a previous meeting to develop some standards for large-scale solar arrays, solar farms, whatever you want to call them. She has since sent us some stuff. To say I'm disappointed would be an understatement, because basically this is copy and pasted from the, it's from the...
Audubon.
It's from the Audubon Society Model Solar Ordinances, and even they say in the beginning of that, you know, they're basically suggestions. Communities will need to carefully consider how model language may be modified to suit local conditions and where it should be inserted into existing zoning ordinance, if applicable. Well, I remember specifically asking her to consider our land use ordinance while developing these standards. If you look at the standards for the large-scale thing, you'll find that they're not allowed in the residential zone, in a residential zone. Well, the only place these are allowed is in the residential business zone, under our ordinance. So basically, she's, I shouldn't say created, she's copied standards that make it impossible to actually have these things in our town. I have other issues with it, and I'd be happy to discuss them if you want to go on with that.
So is it, this is from the...
The Audubon Model Solar Ordinance that we first were given back a year and a half ago by our Larson, our code enforcement officer.
Yeah, and who, and who gave us this, this one now, the updated one, it was the...
Tom V.
Wait, the, the town's...
Climate to Thrive. And, and, oh, I should also mention that Jesse sent what we had approved the last time onto Climate to Thrive, back to Johanna Blackman and Beth Wolfoke, who's their solar expert, remember, she came to a meeting earlier, and Beth was the only one, for comment, and Beth was the only one to respond, and says she had no issues with what we had proposed and approved at our last meeting. We also told, I mean, can, I don't even really want to get into it unless you want, you want to hear other arguments against what she's proposed.
What about suggestions for edits, or for edits to what she proposed? I mean, it seems like, is that, or is that not...
There, there might be some good things in here, I agree, like, I think maybe some of the, the standards for what happens if they continue, discontinue operation, okay? But I don't see how we can get through all this tonight. It's, it's something, you know...
I agree.
Yeah, and as far as, like, she has created standards for rooftop, well, I, I, once again, I say she has created, she has copy and pasted standards for rooftop and the ground-mounted, and, and which we didn't ask her to do, and it has things in here, like, you know, calculating input from fire chief, calculating weight, weight loads, wind resistance, things like that.
Oh, I suppose...
Which, you know, our code enforcement officer can't do. I mean, there's, there's things in here about the town in, you know, town engineer, or, the town electrician, where was that? I can't remember right now, which, things that we don't have.
Suggestion, I mean...
What's that?
I mean, it sounds like you are ready to go through and make edits, and have...
No, I'm not, because there, there's so, so much we need to discuss here.
Okay.
You know, the, what's the proper size for a fence? She has said, if a fence is, is required, it should be five inches off the ground to allow small terrestrial analysts to enter, fine. So we have an applicant come in here and says, well, I meet that, it's, my fence is five inches off the ground, yeah, but your fence is only two feet high, you know? There should be real safety standards there, because these are electric, electrical generation facilities, and, you know, we don't want little kids wandering in there, just like we don't, Person has around there, there's substations, there has to be, I mean, we could use some to start, but I think we need to...
Did the town, did the town pay for this?
No, it came from a state, a state grant. State grant, we paid for it as taxpayers.
Yeah.
Yep. Might go to the federal government before it comes back to state.
It's wandered all the way.
I mean, I, yeah.
So, you know, we could take some things out here at some point, but I am not prepared to go through all this. I think we need to take our time and think about it, and develop some real standards for these things, and put that before voters.
Great.
I'm sure there's, there are other organizations that have standards also, that you at least have a number to compare.
Yeah, possibly, yeah.
Should we consider this at a future meeting? What's the process for editing this, if it's not just...
Well, first of all, we don't need a motion. We've already, we've already approved the solar standards at our last meeting.
I understand that.
So we don't need a new motion unless somebody wants to change something right now. And, and, and to me, this is totally inadequate, and...
I hear you saying that, but I don't understand what your proposal is, for how do we get from...
My proposal, my proposal is that we work to develop some standards for these things in the future.
Great.
And, and if you want to incorporate some of these things, if they make sense, that's fine, but as this, I'm, I can't send this on to Selectmen, as this is, for inclusion in our ordinance?
Revise it, edit it?
I, I don't, I don't think it's complete enough. There are things missing.
So maybe what we could, like, make a list of those things that are missing, and have a, like, request Tom V expand it, to include those things that are missing?
I think we should start from scratch, personally.
Okay. And what would that look like? Like, how would we start from scratch?
Well... How would we start from scratch? The, the same way we started from scratch with any other land use changes, okay? Okay? Proposals, you know, we can look at other towns' standards, and, and consider those, and look at what we need. What, what, what do you want to achieve?
Has the state setting the standards?
Not that I could find. There's a National Electrical Code that has some standards, but I haven't seen anybody referring to those, and I couldn't even find...
Is that more safety?
Huh?
Is that more safety issues?
Yeah, I think those are more safety issues and that sort of thing, and, and I don't know exactly, to get to those, you have to pay for the National Electric Code thing, so I didn't bother doing that, it's not, it's not free on, free online.
What if we asked Tom V and/or Katie to provide the Bar Harbor solar ordinance as a reference point, which is a more comprehensive or expansive, it's a longer ordinance than this one? And we could, we could use that and this as a, and we could borrow things from the Bar Harbor ordinance to add to this, that we can change this as needed?
I really don't, I really can't speak for Climate to Thrive. All I know is that they had no issue, only Beth had no issue with what we've proposed so far.
Right. Okay.
So, I don't know, they had a grant to do this, I understand there's some kind of grant expiration date, I don't know anything about that. I don't know when it happens, I...
I'm asking you as the chair of the Planning Board, what process do you want to undergo to develop, I've heard you say that you do want to develop standards?
Right.
I support that, and I'm trying to help create a process where we can then move forward.
I thought that's why we said no to begin with, because it's essentially a moratorium, while we can work to develop standards. We have meetings, upcoming meetings, that's put things on our agenda and start coming up with some ideas. Maybe our code enforcement officer, or our deputy code enforcement officer, who's such a nice person, could actually dig up the Bar Harbor or any other town's solar ordinances for us, or maybe we as members of the Planning Board ourselves could actually look at those as well.
That's a great idea.
But I find Bar Harbor's ordinances are very difficult, because they have so many zones.
Sure, we'll, we'll, sort of, put your blinders on a little bit, and sift through the noise of the...
Right.
The other stuff, but I think that as a, I think it's the most sort of developed, but we could also ask for trend, past one, someone, you know, the last couple of years. And I think that also I would ask, Katie, to ask Tom V for others, I think that Climate to Thrive will have access to a library of solar ordinances. And maybe we could ask for three, is that the right number of, you know, and if you're able to get three for our next meeting, great, and if you're not, then put it on the agenda If you're able to get three for our next meeting, great, and if you're not, then put it on the agenda for a future meeting. If you are...
Three different towns?
I think that's what I'm, yeah, three different ordinances that have been passed.
Does Southwest Harbor, does that have any?
Southwest doesn't, no. And Mount Desert...
Is in the process.
It's in the process, yeah.
Yeah, it's one of these things where, yeah, I'm not an expert on this stuff. I mean, I kind of know a little bit about it. I don't have, I'll just be candid, I do not have the time outside of these meetings to go and, you know...
Look things up.
Develop this stuff and write it. So if the town expects us to do this, then we're going to need to be provided with some pretty decent drafts to start with, to work on, and that's either going to be through, you know, the town resources, or we, or we hire a consultant for like, I don't know, five grand or something, or whatever we, you know, say, hey...
I mean, I think we have a consultant who has prepared a draft. And I think that if it doesn't meet our standards, it should be clear and specific.
Back to the consultant.
To the consultant to say, this is what we would like differently, like, thank you for this draft. We would like these three or five or 30 things different. And I'm not sure if Tomby's received that feedback yet. Have you, can you hear me?
I haven't. She can listen to the date. The reason being is because she was asked for very specific things when she was here, and she didn't listen to any of those things. So I waited to hear your...
That's, that feels very, I don't know, accusatory in a non...
Not accusatory, she was asked to look for, through our ordinance.
I mean, in fact, she didn't consider our ordinance, it was developing these standards.
But I did not contact her, because I haven't heard your input.
Okay.
You know...
I don't know what her process was, I don't know if you looked at our ordinance or not. I don't think you do either. I think it's fair to say that it feels to the chair as if our ordinance has not been considered completely. And that...
Well, it's obvious, because it, the standards for the large-scale solar arrays say that they're not allowed in our town.
And I heard you say that you don't think that large-scale solar arrays should be allowed in our town.
I didn't say that. I said that large-scale solar arrays, we need to have standards before they're allowed in this town.
I'm just suggesting that Tomby's not, like, heard that, heard us say when she was in our, in the, in our meeting, that we don't want large-scale arrays in our town. I heard that conversation at the State Council. And she may have interpreted that and written here that it's prohibitive. And it's a draft, right? Like, the whole point of this is for, to give us something for us to revise and say, all right, you know what? That doesn't feel quite right, so let's tweak this language, let's tweak that language. I think if you want a different kind of draft, that's fine too, but let's be specific with our consultant so that she can respond to it, as opposed to, and, and maybe that, like, incorporate our ordinance as as specific as you're able to be. I haven't, but...
I have no idea what Climate to Thrive's involvement is, other than what was presented to us tonight. So that would be the first thing somebody should find out.
What's, I don't understand your question.
Or is this, is this all the work they were supposed to do? It, it's my understanding there's a deadline on their grant, and that's coming up fairly soon. So once the grant expires, Jessie told me this.
Okay.
Okay, once the grant expires, they're not going to work on it anymore. So I don't know what their commitment is. I haven't seen any contract, it's not, or whatever there is, agreement between the town and them.
Okay. My understanding from the Seasibility Committee meeting that Tomby came to last month is that Climate to Thrive is partnering with the town for at least a year. And I don't know exactly when that begins and ends, but for a while. And we have the ability and the opportunity to engage and ask for Tomby to do as much sort of work as we, you know, if we could be professional and clear about it. And it's absolutely, like, welcome to invite her to a future meeting, I'm not sure if she was invited tonight, and...
So that's the first thing, to find out, what exactly is the agreement? And can they work on this further? And if so, we'll, we'll work with them, I guess. Brett, any thoughts?
I'm, I'm reading here to catch up. I'm just reading here.
Ben, you okay?
So the only thing that we really asked them for was the industrial.
Right, yeah.
No.
Yes, we told them we were all set with the ground-mounted and the roof-mounted. We told her that.
I heard us ask for a draft solar ordinance. When we met there, I don't...
Katie, you remember that meeting?
Notice, but like...
I remember you asking for her to look specifically through our ordinance to make sure it applies to our standards. And I remember you asking for the large...
Large scale, the...
Scale, that you already made and started to make decisions about roof-mounted and ground-mounted.
Exactly.
For residential and commercial. I do not recall asking for a whole sort of ordinance, but that also does not mean that I'm correct. I could listen back to the meeting.
Well, it's a matter of...
What do we want, wait, wait, don't we want to ask for help drafting the solar?
Yeah, yeah, it, yeah.
Great.
May I ask, do we want, do you want an entire separate ordinance? Or do we want information to be added into the L U O?
I almost think it should be a separate ordinance, like our telecommunications ordinance.
Yes, I don't feel super strongly about it. Our telecommunications ordinance isn't in this binder, is that because it's not under the purview of the select board? I mean, of the planning board?
Plan board, yeah. And actually, I went to, if you look under towers there in our ordinance, under land use...
On the land use?
Yeah, it'll say, see telecommunications ordinance. But when I went online tonight, because I looked at my, my book too, and I thought, gee, it's not in there. And, and I, I'm assuming, like you did, that it's because it's not under our purview. I went online to the town and checked the ordinances, it wasn't posted. Now, they did some work on the, on the website, and maybe that got left off.
So if somebody wants to build a cell tower?
Yeah, there, there's, there's, there's standards there as...
It says...
Do you have it?
I do. No person shall construct without code officer or planning board as follows. So you're included in it, so I'm wondering why it isn't on our website.
But I remember when they developed it, and it has standards like for fencing and standards for decommissioning and things like that, which I think would come into play with what we're talking about, and that's why I was looking at it, but I, I couldn't find it.
It seems to make sense to treat cell tower, well, maybe we need to be treating the towers differently in the sense that, like, maybe they should be part of our package, we should be, but that we should treat solar arrays similarly, where if there's a sandal in ordinance, that seems to make sense. It could also, I can imagine it being a chapter.
Right, I could see it being a chapter.
You can see it as a chapter.
Yeah, I could see it being a chapter. We were, I mean, we've already started to incorporate some of the definitions, right?
Yeah, that's true too, yeah. That's true too, yeah. Good point.
And I think we would probably, I mean, I don't know, the first thing I think about is buffering, because I don't know, I've been buffered here to death over the last five years.
Right, right.
And it's, it's in the land use ordinance, so I can imagine it's going to be a cross-reference to, you know...
Right, exactly, yeah, yeah. And, and that's one of the things in here that really doesn't refer to buffering that much.
Which I think is, you know, for rooftop, who cares?
My, one of my main concerns about what's here is a lot of things that wouldn't stand up to, what do I want to say? A, well, to the ordinance itself, I'm not saying that correctly. What do I want to say, Brett?
I don't know.
Do you mean like our standards?
Well, no, that it's...
It's not, you know, enforceable, because...
Well, yeah, that's not as enforceable under the ordinance. I mean, the ordinance should be pretty clear-cut in a lot of ways, but there are a lot of generalities that it's easy to get around and...
Like, I don't know, I'm just, this is a fencing sentence that says, where fencing is used, fences should be elevated by a minimum...
That, see, that's what I mean, yeah.
It's different than saying, there shall be a fence that is eight feet tall.
That's, that's my point, yeah. So, and, well, it's in, so, under both medium and large scale, I believe.
See, to me, this, I want to come back to buffering here.
Yep.
It feels like that's either a safety or a buffering thing. Like, I, you know, I, I guess I can see both sides. I think, for me, I gotta go, I started to read it, I will say, she, at least it does incorporate the definitions that we, you know, that started to bake into the L U, it does track those. Although I didn't get down, I don't know if we, if we have...
It defines and regulates scale, small, medium, and large, as opposed to...
That's what I, as opposed to...
The industrial, commercial.
S E S, residential, or commercial.
Right, so those are defined, but they aren't, there aren't standards for them. There are standards for small, medium, and large.
Oh.
Which I think is, which seems to make a lot of sense to me, because that's the thing that we should be regulating is size, and having standards fix on size. And that's a lot more straightforward than, than, you know, the threshold between...
Here, here's another, to the point of it being vague in a lot of places. We've talked about how we did, thought it was just counterintuitive to just clear-cut a bunch of trees to put up one of these things, like they did on the Knox Road in Bar Harbor. Okay, clearing of natural vegetation should be limited to what is necessary for the construction, operating, and maintenance of ground-mounted solar energy systems, whereas otherwise prescribed by applicable laws, regulations, or ordinances.
Right.
Is that useful? No. I mean, I could just say, well, I, to do what I want to do, I needed to clear-cut 10 acres.
That's actually, it feels though a similar language to our buffering standards, which are not very well-defined in our ordinance, to sort of define that.
Yeah. Can I say something? I think we're getting too deep in the weeds right now.
Right.
Okay. This is something for the future.
Great.
Okay, and I think it's something we really need to work on. We have some good ideas here. You'll talk to Tomby.
I think to answer your question, we would like Tomby to prepare a amendment to our ordinance.
Okay.
It seemed like that's where, or maybe we don't know yet.
I, I, no, I would say, I would welcome Tomby working with us to develop something.
Right, yep.
But I am not interested in her going...
But Katie's question was about, is it a separate ordinance, or is it a change to the land use ordinance?
In thinking about that, we've already put some definitions in there, into the land use ordinance. And, and as we discuss it further, we might want to change it, that's, you know, that's down, let's kick that down the road until we can start developing some of the standards and see what should, should be.
So I will say, I, it's just registering to me that she, that the definitions that we created are included, but they're not actually used.
Yeah.
Well...
I don't know.
Okay.
I mean, well, if you look at everything, everything that I've done in pink is just...
I wonder, you know, I don't know the answer to your question.
Is word for word right out of the Audubon.
I don't know the answer to your, your, I don't know, to the question, what your, it raises a question in my mind as to whether we should be looking at size versus the type of use and the type of, the way the power is used. Yeah, I feel like, I just don't, I don't have enough, I need to see, there must be some other towns that have... Like, we don't need to completely recreate the wheel that they had, and, and whatever this came from, I don't know. Audubon or...
Yeah, the Audubon Model Solar Ordinance.
There must be some other towns that have had to wrestle with this and have figured these things out.
Right, and I think that Tomby's recommendation, when we discussed it, it's the Sand Millie Committee, it's to regulate size, because, like, trying to regulate how the...
Yeah, I'm not, I get it, it's her recommendation, but I, I'm not going to, I'm going to see how people actually, they actually have to do it, do it, not consultants who just, you know. So I'm just curious, like, you know, what does Sanford do? Or what, you know, what is, I mean, there must be some, you, you said Mount Desert?
No, no, no.
Mount Desert doesn't have anything yet.
Trenton?
I want to say Hancock does as well, but I'm...
No, I don't think so.
I don't think so.
What about Franklin?
Ellsworth does, I believe. I don't think any little towns do, maybe, maybe Trenton does, like...
I believe Trenton does, yes.
Anyway, we can, we can figure this out.
What I would like to see is for someone, I don't know if that would be you, Katie, or our consultant, to not just get an Audubon one, but to find three examples of codes that other kind of similar towns have done. Maybe not, you know, in Maine, maybe, I don't even know, a couple in Maine and one in New Hampshire, I don't know. I just, to see how other people have done it.
Yeah, that's great, definitely, that's a, that's a request.
Because I, to me, the, the crucial question is, is...
That's a big one.
Like, how do you, is it by size, or is it by use, or how, what's the approach that people take? Because right now, even this document, it's, she's advocating for a size approach. We were talking about, it's a use approach that is a proxy kind of for a size. If it's residential, it's always not going to be that big. If it's, what was the other one we had?
Commercial.
Commercial solar, it's going to be a little bigger. And then there's the biggest one there. It's our biggest one.
The industrial.
Yes, yes.
Industrial.
Industrial's not listed in the...
Oh, it's not here, okay, well, Tom, it's... So, I mean, they're kind of, you know, they're going to get bigger, but I, I don't know, I just want to see how other people have done it. And we, you know, as I said before, I think we need to be, we don't, we want to make sure we're not doing anything that's different than how the regulators look at it. Like, you know, whoever, Versant or C M P, however they're allowing people to work with them, we don't want to have things that are inconsistent with how that works. You know, like, even like, early on, I was like, ah, we don't want anyone to be able to feed the grid. Well, turns out, you can do that, and that's how, you know, you can have your neighbor or something like that, or your friend or something, and so we, I was like, well, we don't want to do that then. We don't want to, we don't want to be rebel, trying to do something that's different than what the market is allowing. I see a hand.
So, if I may speak, we put some little panels on our garage. We couldn't put them up until we had approval from Versant to do so. So, because they had a, we, how, how much power we could generate was one of their concerns.
Yep.
And after we had their approval, then they sent us a card and said, if you generate excess power over the course of the year, would you like to donate that credit to somebody else? And, and you fill out a card and they can do it. There's, one of the things we were told was that there is a couple in Bernard that is entirely off the grid, and they generate enough power from their roof-mounted system to pay part of their son's bill in Southwood Harbor. But it has to be within the same power company. The power company still controls a lot of what is happening in the city, if you have to connect to them.
Yeah, yeah, and that's...
Going to Vermont is not going to help you.
What's that?
Going to Vermont for ordinance is...
Oh, good, well...
You need to go someplace because of the Versant area, because Versant still controls what happens.
Yeah, okay, all right, let's get one, fair enough. Yeah.
Okay, have we discussed this enough?
I guess, I don't know.
For now.
I feel like we could probably do some more.
Speak now, wherever, forever, hold your peace, well, hold your peace until the next meeting.
I guess the question is, like, do you feel like you have enough information to communicate with Tomby to engage her?
So I'm going to try to see if I can, A, get a hold of Versant, see if they can explain to me a little bit more about how all of this works on their end, so I can then talk to Tomby, can't be Tom, Tommy, help me.
Tomby.
Tommy, about making this less vague and more according to our pre, our ordinance that's created.
But specifically for industrial. But specifically for industrial, right?
Wouldn't they?
We're all set, we're all set with-
Well, afterward, I need a consensus.
I don't think, I don't think we're all set, and I don't think that industrial is a very useful definition. So, you can overrule me, or like, whatever, but I just wanna, you know, I, I don't, I think that's a hard request to ask consultant, a solar consultant, to come up with an ordinance regulating something that's hard to regulate.
Why is it hard to regulate?
Because the, the, determining where the energy is being consumed is hard for a planning board to regulate. I think it's easier for Versant to regulate, but I think it's hard for a planning board to regulate. And the analogy that I would use is that it would be similar to us trying to regulate where boat maker is selling his boats. And we can regulate, like, how big the boat shop is, that's useful for us, and like, what the parking lot was like. But to be able to say, nope, sorry, you're not allowed, you can only sell boats to people at Treemont, you can only sell boats to people from the state of Maine.
Well, that'd be unconstitutional.
Becomes pretty problematic for us. Or, like, you know, to be able to, for the planning board to be able to say how somebody is using their product. I might be wrong, there might be another analogy that is very, like, within our bounds and so on. But that's how I've been thinking about it, and that trying to regulate the ways in which panels are being used is-
Why is the size so important?
I think because we care about land coverage. I mean, just the way we would wanna regulate the league size. I think we should regulate array size. And so, I think it's-
But we have a lot of coverage standards.
Correct, and, and so, right now, you could all, I mean, you could build a solar array, it would sort of fall under the same thing as like a tree, a bunch of sheds, I guess.
Right.
And-
So, how, how would having medium or, and large scale change that?
Well, it would be, if it's more stringent, then we were, essentially saying that solar panels, you know, are, or maybe, no, I guess, I guess we could say that you're actually allowed to have, well, I don't know, if we went with this draft, five thousand square feet of small scale solar system, and that is permitted. I think that in terms of lock coverage, it's probably about the same as the building, and that should be the case. That makes sense to me.
It does say that it would be a principal use under what she has for large scale.
Yep, the low, yeah, lower scales, yes. I don't think I answered your question, or maybe I didn't understand.
No.
Can you ask your question again? Cause I don't, I-
Why is it important to distinguish between the various scales, and specifically, I ask, medium and large scale? If we're talking about commercial solar arrays, people, companies wanting to build these things and then sell the power?
Well, I think it's useful, it's a useful tool for us if we wanted to allow a certain size and not allow a different size. Then we should be, we should define what the size that we allow is.
So, you don't need medium and large, you just need one standard saying you can't have anything bigger than next.
Sure, yeah, unless, right, I guess the question becomes like, how do we wanna allow small scale anywhere in the town, and medium scale only in this zone, and large scale not?
Right now, commercial venture like this is only allowed in the residential business zone. So, are you suggesting changing zones, allowing commercial ventures like this in certain zones?
I'm suggesting that, or I'm make, trying to answer your question about the value of having the, like, the three or four sizes. I, I think if we as a board decided that it would be useful to regulate small, medium, and large differently, then yes, we should define three things. If we only care about small versus large, we should just have small versus large. I just, I don't think, like, but now we're sort of getting into the weeds about-
Yeah, I mean, it, it seems to me that, you know, we, we set a size limit, and that's all we need. I mean, we're unnecessarily complicating things by saying, oh, well, there's two, two limits. Actually, you could have a medium of this size or a large of that size. I don't understand why that's necessary.
It might not be, unless we wanted to allow a certain size in some areas, zones, and a different size in other zones.
And that, that would, once again, go back to my contention that you need to change the zones, or, or the requirements in the zone, the standards of the zone.
Wouldn't Versant be a good source for information for the towns that have ordinances if they've got-
What's that, Versant?
Wouldn't Versant be a good source to look at to see what towns-
No.
No.
I don't, I don't think, in my experience, working with, Versant is not a very useful source of information for ordinance language.
You gotta call Canada.
Well, what I'm saying is, wouldn't Versant know those towns that have had developments? And we could check with those towns to see if they have, what their ordinances would be.
It should be publicly available, you just, like, goggle it.
Yep.
Goggle.
Katie, in your list of things you want to do, you suggested that you would start by calling Versant and ask them to educate you about how it works.
Essentially, yes.
I applaud you for that, but I wouldn't, don't make that a, like, rate limiting factor, or whatever, like, you make the call, that's great, but I would just, my recommendation is to keep your expectations low for how much you're gonna learn in that process. And I think that meeting with Tomby and Beth would be a more useful productive, I would have higher expectations for how much you'd learn in those meetings than with Versant, based on my experience.
And it was Beth.
Beth is Tomby's colleague.
Beth, cool, because the woman who came and spoke to us from Climate to Thrive originally-
And so, she's been working with, you know, with Versant and the Climate Thrive for three or four years now, on multiple solar projects, including the ones in Bar Harbor. And so, it's a, it's a very useful resource for understanding that sense. Are you raising your hand, Sarah?
I sort of did. I just wanted to add that Beth has also worked deeply with the state, I mean, has worked, like, all aspects of solar, including, what's the commission?
Yep.
The name of that commission?
Is that a thing?
No, the one that is the advisory, or the, anyway, the power-
The P U C.
Thank you.
Yep, yep, so she's-
She's has definitely all of that, I just-
Public Utilities Commission. Yes.
I searched their site, and I couldn't find anything useful. Doesn't mean it's not there. But if it is, it's well concealed.
That's why I think that using the local consultant who's totally ready to, and would be happy to help educate you, it might be more useful to go to the P U C or the Utilities.
Okay. Brett, are you finding anything?
I am. I'm reading a great article from a law firm about municipal regulation of solar power made.
Oh, what's the law firm?
Rodman Wunschel.
Oh, yes, I've read that in the past. Don't ask me to recall what it said, though. Did have some useful stuff, if I remember. So, anyway, do you wanna start discussing further discussions at our next meeting or not? What's a board's pleasure?
I would like that if Katie and Tomby are able to provide three ordinances from other towns.
And should that also depend on what else is coming up at our next meeting? Is there anything on the horizon?
Yes.
Okay, and that's what you wanna discuss under C E O issues, okay. Okay, we'll wait and, and maybe make a motion again. Okay, can we-
I look forward to that meeting. We should schedule it when it's useful to-
It's much fun, it's a spin, it's been, can we move on now? Okay, and come back to that, okay? C E O issues?
So, I have a few. So, in July of last year, or maybe, yes, July of last year, you all went over the Lindhart family lands with-
Yes, we had a nice hike.
Okay, so he let his timeframe expire.
Yep.
So, he is back at the beginning, the sidewalk is gonna have to happen again, so he will be on the agenda for the preliminary workshop for the next, for the twenty-seventh.
He's coming back for a-
So, he has to start over because he left the six months.
Preliminary workshop? I don't think he has to start there, though, does he?
Unless you choose to so waive it.
Yeah, and he hasn't done, done that?
Has he asked to waive it?
He hasn't asked for anything, but according to the ordinance, if he goes past the six months, he has six months to come back and go-
Subdivision?
Subdivision ordinance, yeah.
He has six months to come back to the board with his information, all that he had, and he did not meet the six-month deadline. And he did not ask for an extension.
Yeah, shall submit pre-application workshop, yeah. Okay, and we can't waive the site visit because frankly, that was pretty useless.
Um, it doesn't, so, John and I interpret this differently, and I guess I'm gonna have to speak with you all or Jesse about this. So, if you go to the, I have to find the right page, my apologies, to page twenty-eight for waivers, it tells you what may be waived, but it doesn't specifically say that you can or cannot waive sidewalk.
On which page? Twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight, yes. It tells you an annual amount of things that you may waive, but it doesn't specify anything about the sidewalk. John took that as you are able to waive it. I took it as it's not in the ordinance, so it's not clear.
We may only waive, seems pretty clear, the things that are then listed.
That's how I took it.
Yeah, looks like we have to go through the whole process again.
Um, four B H I J K, four B-
So, that's just some of the standards that are allowed to be waived, that coincide with the main statue. Uh, thirty A forty-four oh one, maybe?
Yep, okay.
Okay.
Um, which is the Lindhart product?
That's the one, uh, we did two on the same day. We went down on, on the Cape Road, and then the other one off of one oh two there, on the Treemont Road.
Above a cemetery and-
Yes, that is the one.
You know, it's on the shore, yeah, we walked our way, has a cemetery and that sort of thing, yeah.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Uh, he was pretty ugly at me at first. I calmed him down, he was. I did tell him that, because I heard from Jesse, obviously I wasn't there, but I heard from Jesse and Sarah, that there was trouble, his sister, his representative, had trouble finding the flagging at the corners of some of the, where the flags are supposed to be.
They had no flagging out there.
Oh, there's no flag. So, he told me he was not informed that there was any issue with the sidewalk. So, I told him that he would require, be required to be there, but he asked me if his engineer or site, uh, the site evaluator or waiter could be there. And I said, I believe that was acceptable, as long as somebody can show us where the flags are. But the other thing is in here, and I apologize, I did not mark on where it is, but I believe it says, if there is a snowstorm, you are allowed to defer.
Right, yeah, there is, yeah.
We don't have anything, but-
Yeah, yeah, and we have to do that within thirty days, okay. Okay, maybe we get a four-wheeler this time to drive around in?
Yeah, I can work on that.
Okay.
There's a bobcat in the public works. It might not hold everybody, but-
It's, it only has to hold Mark.
At least two of you have to go.
Yeah.
The rest mustn't walk.
Oh, okay.
The, um, the twenty-seventh is our next meeting, correct, is that right? And that'll be the preliminary meeting, uh, whatever.
For that, yeah.
And then the site plan happens after that, so that in March.
You have to make it within thirty days.
Thirty days of that pre-application workshop, yeah. Unlike the, our other, other ordinance, the site plan, where it's like after completeness.
Yep, okay.
Uh, you have another issue, don't you?
Yes. So, I don't know exactly, I apologize, I should have looked up, when you approved the Orchard Hills Circle subdivision.
Oh, I was-
Mansell Lily's project.
Mansell Lily, correct.
I don't know that many now.
So, he proposed a road to go through Orchard Hills Circle, and, and nobody caught this on his plan that is approved. The road that he wanted to use, instead of labeling it Greg, as a road, Greg Johnston wrote, existing parking and drive. So, technically, in order for him to put that road through there, this has to be amended, because it has been recorded in the Registry of Deeds, because it is not shown on the plan, it is shown as a parking.
Hold on, I thought the issue was he wants to now discontinue that, use that road, and wants to put it, use as driveway.
Yeah, so he doesn't wanna build this green part yet.
Yeah.
But if you look in here, this blue is actually not, you can see that it's all just existing driveway through here.
Yeah.
It does not specifically show this road. So, I was unsure if you thought that plan is approvable for a road, because technically, it does not show a road. It just shows existing driveway.
Yeah, I think that's a change.
Okay.
Right, I mean, re-
He doesn't wanna do this now.
And this one, like-
Oh, I have.
The one, the one we removed, that was the entrance.
Right.
And it lived around, and this was awkward.
But what he wants to do, because before he told you he wanted to gate this off.
Yeah.
Yeah, he wanted to use it, yeah.
Great, that's fine.
But he wants to now have this as a road that goes through. But he told me very adamantly that this is, this road is on the plan, and I told him, no, he needs to come before you again, but I wanted to get your-
It's an amendment to subdivision.
Okay.
That's already been filed, as Larson said, right?
Correct.
So, I know he doesn't wanna come before the planning board, but it sounds like legally he has to, yeah.
Okay.
I agree.
Yeah.
So, I did look through the standards, you only have to go over the road standards, you don't have to go through everything else. It said if there's a revision of any sort, you are allowed to only look over the standards that apply. So, you don't have to go through everything that you had through previously.
But he, the downside for mine is that he'll have to hire Greg to redraw that plan.
Right.
Which, like-
Although, it doesn't specifically say, it just says the scan, the plan has to be to scale. It does not specifically say it has to be done by his engineer, because he's already got this approved plan. So, that's another thing I wanted to ask you about, because he asked if he-
But it shows a proposed road that's not gonna be done, could be put in.
I think we need to revise site plan.
Okay.
Yeah, sounds like to me.
So, he does say that he does eventually want to add that green road that you did approve.
Yep.
But my issue is this middle part that is not-
Right, and his revised plan should show the, the design, it would be, it would include the road that he is gonna use, call that a road, and label it, and maybe he's got a register of the town, or whatever, like, and then he dash in the green part and say, this is a future plan.
Okay.
And, and then, and then it's already approved, so he doesn't have to come back, I don't think, when he wants to put that other road in.
No, yeah.
Whereas if you were to delete that road entirely, and we've wrote it, and he wants to add a different road in the future.
So, it doesn't seem to state anywhere in here that it has to be done by the engineer or site evaluator, as long as this plan that he is going to submit is to scale. So, if you were to use the same exact plan, draw it to scale on that, that road, that part of that road, would that be acceptable to you all? As it does not specify that it has to be engineer or site evaluator.
It's gonna get out of Sharpie?
He did say he had a C A D program where you can overlay, but I'm, that's, it says, if I don't know what to do, I need to ask you all, so and so.
Well, yeah, well, if, it doesn't specifically say an engineer.
None that I could find. On page seventeen is the revision to approve substantive plan application, application plan. plan.
We were, sometime in the last couple of meetings, we mentioned, like, do we want to require a surveyor, a survey plan?
I brought that up for site plan review, and you guys had, no way.
No way, was I? I think that if we're, if we don't require it to be a licensed professional or whatever, that, then we don't require.
Okay, 'cause I couldn't find it in here, but I'm going to double-check before I give them the okay on anything, but I want to speak with you all.
Yeah, I mean, the, you know, Greg might have an opinion about somebody changing his drawings, but that's between...
Oh, yeah?
You know, your client, your engineer.
Yeah, I mean, the way this is written, then, basically, somebody could come in with a plan drawn on a napkin.
Well, it'd have to be a, a lot of my...
To scale.
Yeah, to scale, but yeah.
Okay, a placemat.
And I think that's, I, like, I think that's okay. I think that, like, a Sharpie on a plan, as long as it's a really, like, clear Sharpie. I don't see a, like...
I mean, if he were to draw this to scale and make sure that all road conditions are met, would that be something he wanted to...
Yeah, I don't think, according to our ordinance, it doesn't sound like he needs an engineer.
Okay.
But he needs to have it to scale.
Yes. These are questions he asked, and I wanted to make sure that you all were comfortable with what I am conveying to you.
Is that it?
Okay, I hate to be this person, but I know, Mike Wagner that owns this boat shop right on Mar Harbor.
Yep.
He is using somebody else's lot across Flatiron to store boats. Now, it started with one or two, and now there's like 20 of them over there.
That's an enforcement issue, right? We don't deal with enforcement issues.
Right. I was, John...
Thank God.
Wow. Don't ask me to bring it up to you all to see what you thought about it, because technically, it should be a change of use because it is, it's just a vacant lot, and now it's all of a sudden a lot of boat storage.
Well, I would say leave, leave that up to...
Mike Wagner?
No, no, the vacant lot, who owns the vacant lot?
David McDonald.
And where is it, Jim?
It's all Flatiron there.
Oh, okay.
It's a, across from where his, I guess it's almost across from Tony Benzetti's house.
Yeah, I've seen all those boats go in there, yeah. Uh, well, like I said, that's an enforcement issue, so you and John should make that decision and then...
Bring it to you on the planning board.
Yeah.
Okay. He just told me to bring it up to you.
Notice a, if it's a violation, he should get a notice of violation, yeah.
Yeah, that part doesn't come down.
And then...
The notice won't, but for, in order for him to fix it, he would have to come before the planning board for change of use.
Sounds that way.
But John just asked me to double-check with you all to see if you did agree before it.
Oh, put it on us.
I was going to.
Okay. Is that it? Or do you have anything else? Okay.
Do you want any to keep going?
Uh, no, I think. Okay. Um, we need to set a public hearing on these proposed land use ordinance and site plan review ordinance changes, which includes the solar stuff, okay? Uh, it suggests that we should do March 12th at 6:00 PM, well, 6:00 PM, the beginning of the meeting. So...
Can you remind us of the process in terms of, like, we...
They advertise it, they advertise it, that there's gonna be a public hearing on proposed land use, a site plan review ordinance changes, okay? People can come and make comments, that sort of thing. So, what we have proposed and what we're sending on to selectmen, that's what they'll be acting on. Selectmen will hold their own separately at some point if they decide to put all this stuff on the warrant.
Does the public hearing have to happen, does our public hearing happen before it goes to the select board?
I spoke to Jesse about that this, uh, this morning or this afternoon, whenever I was in there today, and I said, should we wait for the selectmen's to make their, selectmen to make their decision? He said, no. So, that's what I'm going with.
Okay. And I think that answers our question.
I mean, they're at least gonna approve some of these changes, and so we still have to have a public hearing.
Right, but like, do we, right, and you just said we don't need to wait for them to approve.
No, no, no. I mean, this is everything from us not even have to approve dog houses and sheds to...
And then the other question about the public hearing is, like, do we need to package these changes in some way that it's more, I don't know if there's a version that's like, is there a follow-up?
So, it will be the whole ordinance.
With track changes?
Yes.
Yeah, it'll be redlined.
Correct.
Okay. Which I guess is probably how we don't, it seems like...
That's why we've done it in the past.
Okay. And is it, and I guess it's sort of like one package deal. It's like, here's the planning boards presenting these, this suite of changes to the ordinance. We're asking for public feedback on that. Can we then adjust our recommendation after public hearing?
Yes, I believe so.
And then we respond to the public hearing?
That's why you hold public hearings, yeah.
Then that's the select board after March 12th. Okay, and then they act on the action.
Eventually, this is part of the process, going to voters at the Maytown meeting, right?
But the voter, right, and by, how do you say, may, the voters are just saying, like, yes or no to the vote changes, as opposed to they're not going to...
They'll look at, yeah. Well, I don't know how they're gonna do the warrant, they're not gonna be separated out, just gonna say, do you approve of the land use ordinance changes? Maybe site plan review will be separate, I don't know. That's up to selectmen, however they do the warrant.
Yep, the process makes sense.
So, are we done? If we are, I'll take a motion to schedule a public hearing on the land use ordinance, site plan review ordinance changes proposed for March 12th, 6:00 PM, right here in the town office meeting room.
I still move.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Motion, a second on the table. I'll have a public hearing, schedule a public hearing for March 12th, 6:00 PM on proposed land use ordinance, site plan review ordinance changes. Any discussion?
Is it feasible, Katie, for you to provide a copy of that at our next meeting, on the 27th, um, so that we know what the public is, and then has access to as well?
All in favor? Four, nothing. Okay, thank you. Uh, we, we were talking about whether to discuss, start, begin discussions on, uh, the, uh, solar ordinances, uh, or the standards for the solar ordinances at our next meeting. If somebody wants to think we should do that, I'll take a motion or...
I'll make a motion that we add the solar standards discussion to our agenda for the February 27th meeting and ask the CEO to provide us with three ordinances from...
It was February 27th, you said?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
At our next meeting.
Have a second?
I will second.
Okay, motion, second on the table to, uh, schedule a discussion for our February 27th meeting. Any discussion on that?
I guess also to invite Tom Vee to that meeting, if she's available.
Rick, you could say something?
Yes, I noticed, so I just was poking around, there actually is an ordinance for Hancock.
Oh, there is?
Town of Hancock.
Okay.
So, that's worth looking at, I think. And then, and then maybe, when I was looking around, I, I will say, there's a fair amount of variation. Like, some of them, like, one I saw was like a page and a half. I was like, wow. And then there's some that are, you know, longer and they deal with decommissioning, and they, they're just better thought out. So, try to get, I think Hancock's okay, and then try to get a couple other, maybe two others that are, that are, you know, maybe Ellsworth that are close. I will say, it's actually, I do think that the, the majority of them seem to be moving towards this, this size piece. Hancock, though, I have no idea where we got our definitions, I don't know the ones that we have here, commercial, industrial. Hancock uses that. They have, they're very similar to what we have, but they're, seem to be in the minority. Most of them now are moving towards this...
Small, medium, large.
Small, medium, large. But I think, so, so we'll have Hancock, which will kind of have the, that, you know, that standard. And then maybe, just, I'm just saying, like, when you look at them, just try to get some that are, have a little bit of meat to them.
So, you want something that's comparable, like, all of them on some, on the same level?
Yeah, like, maybe Ellsworth, but like, if you, like, if Ellsworth is like a page, I don't know, we care about that. It's not gonna be that helpful. Like, we want something that's...
Has some meat to it.
Yeah, has some, you know, like, there's, I, like, I was just looking, you can clearly see that some towns, really, like Belfast, that a good one, but I don't know if we want to use them, that clearly kind of, um, thought things through. They even had a decommissioning plan, like, you've got a...
Is that something you would be interested in?
Oh, we definitely need a decommissioning plan, yeah. You don't want that people just abandoned the site and...
Yeah, not all of them did, and I was like, huh, that's not a bad idea. And I think it's probably out of, you know, it's probably for commercial. It's like, obviously for a house one, you don't need a decommissioning plan.
In a telecommunications ordinance, you know, for solar towers, yeah, there is a decommissioning plan.
So, I'm just, I'm just pointing on, I mean, look, I think if you just kind of poke around and look a few, there are definitely differences in how people, we would like to see some that are have, you know, that are at least four pages.
Okay. Uh, may I ask, and I apologize if I missed that, I saw there was a motion in a second on the solar standards for the next meeting. Did you vote?
No, that's, we're discussing now, that's what, we're still under the discussion part here. I'd be happy to look at some of those other towns' ordinance and, and help you through that, so you don't get bogged.
I can, I can download some, I can...
He, he can, he doesn't have time.
Well, I was kind of poking around here.
I know, I'm just kidding.
Yeah.
I just want to say one thing, while we're discussing this, there's no hurry to do this. It's not gonna make it on the, the Maytown meeting agenda, okay?
Right.
So, I don't want to bog, I don't want to bog down, I, I'm happy to discuss things at every meeting till we get it done, but I don't want to just go for hours on this at each meeting.
I second.
If that makes sense.
I also second.
Okay. Motion, second on the table to, uh, begin discussion of our, uh, solar standards, solar ordinance standards at our February 27th meeting. Uh, we have motion, second. All in favor?
None.
Okay, four zero. Thank you.
Katie, I'll actually send you, Katie, like, I just downloaded, just that you can have a few. I'll send it just to you.
I would much appreciate that.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn at 7:36.
7:36?
That's what I have.
7:25.
I got 25.
Oh, did I say 36, 26? Sorry.
You messed with me, Mike.
I should, I should run for president.
Oh, here we go.
One of the things called the public...
Here we go.
On that note.
Do we have...
We do not have a vote to go home.
We don't have a vote. Okay, we have a motion in a second?
No.
Do we have a motion?
I have to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Exactly.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you, folks. Man, oh, man.
Things are getting a little spicy.
I'm not doing that, no.
How are you doing? What are you doing? I don't even get...
Still, yeah, busy as hell.
Well, sorry.